Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January, well, not January, but February twentieth of meeting of the planning and zoning. We're gonna wait a few minutes after our session to wait for the city council to have a quorum. If you would, please call the roll.
Chairman Najad.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Jabar. Commissioner Javid.
Here.
Commissioner Linton.
Present.
Commissioner Macon is absent. Commissioner Noyola.
Here.
Commissioner Page is absent. Commissioner Karishy.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, we have a quorum and we need to get started. Before I start, I'd like for us to have a few minutes of silence reflecting on people who are suffering and also the forty-some-odd thousand people that lost their lives in the earthquake in Turkey and Syria. Thank you. We do have the minutes of the last meeting distributed. I'd like to get a motion on approval and/or any comments you might have on the minutes.
Mr. Chair, move for approval.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we're gonna get started. The first item is PZ two zero two two dash five hundred.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Brian Donegan requests to abandon a portion of the old Lucas right-of-way that abuts the rear property line of six-two-two West Lucas Drive. He intends to use the abandoned area to install a ten-foot wide driveway for a drive-through service to service Charlie and the Chocolate, Charlie and the Cookie Factory. In October twenty-twenty-one, an SUP was approved to allow a driveway with conditions. Some of those conditions included that the driveway must be a minimum of ten feet in width and to install a privacy fence along the property line. Approval of the request will give Mr. Donegan real property to accommodate the new drive-through and adhere to the conditions set forth by the SUP. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, if approved, applicant shall obtain an appraisal entitlement for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal entitlement must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on city council's agenda. Number two, if approved, applicant shall provide meets and bounds of the proposed abandonment produced by a licensed surveyor. On the projector, you'll see the zoning map. The area outlined in red is the subject property to be abandoned. This is the site plan, the area in yellow is the proposed abandonment. And then this is the subject property. I do believe that Mr. Donegan is here. If you have any questions for him.
Mr. Donegan?
Yes.
Good afternoon. Very well, sir, thank you. If you would state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have.
Brian Donegan, nineteen-ten, nineteen-ten Twenty-first Street. We've met about this before. I met with the new city manager on the property and he suggested this is the way I need to take the procedure to get the drive-through put in. I called out several of the council members, they looked at the property, the mayor, and that no one sees any kind of issue with what I'm asking to do. Ninety-nine percent of the drive-through will be on my property that circles my building and don't affect anything to do with the city or the neighborhood behind it. That's all I'm asking for. I've been, I've been there a year and a half and it's a real successful business. Just in a year, we've been voted number one platinum in three different categories. It's a, it's a real good business and it's gonna even do better if I can get a drive-through. And I've been dealing with it for a year and a half now.
Well, great, thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? There's no questions and Mr. Donegan, thank you for being here. I, I do have, I do own a property that's adjacent to you, so I would recuse myself from voting.
Yes, sir.
And since there are no other questions from you, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna proceed. As I said, I do have a property and I will sign the paper for you. So with that said, would, would you mind, you go in and ask for a vote, please?
We're gonna ask for a vote for PZ two oh twenty-two dash five hundred.
Move for approval with the two conditions.
Second.
So approve PZ two oh twenty-two five hundred with the following conditions, one and two.
Perfect, thank you very much. We're gonna go to the second item is... Go ahead and ask for a vote, please.
All in favor say aye.
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 I made the motion.
Can he do the next one now, is he okay?
Yeah. All in favor, ask him first.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. We're gonna go to the next item on the list, it's PZ two zero two two five one seven, please.
South Tech surveyors and engineers request approval of a replat of lots one and two Northwood addition and parts, part of lots two and three French subdivision into tracks one A and one B Northwood addition and French subdivision, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to divide one two-point-nine acre lot into two tracts of land. The property owner recently developed a gas station at twenty-seven ninety-five East Tex Freeway. This replat will allow the owner to sell and/or develop the remaining land. Staff recommends approval of the following conditions. Number one, no structures or appurtenances shall be placed within the easement property. The city will not be responsible for any surface restoration when water and/or sanitary sewer repairs are necessary within the city of Beaumont water line or sanitary sewer line easement. Staff did need to add a second condition to that. This came after the packets were issued. That second condition is a ten-foot wide utility easement along Delaware Street and shall continue across the northern section for an existing sanitary sewer line. We sent notices to sixteen property owners and we received zero in favor and one in opposition. That one in opposition just mentioned that they were not the owner of the land anymore.
They opposed it, but they were not the owner of the land.
Right.
Alright, that's okay, thank you. Alright ma'am, any questions for the lady? Mr. LaJia?
Oh, I'm so sorry, let me run through that PowerPoint real quick.
Okay.
Sorry about that. This is the zoning map. This is the replat. The original lot line is down here, so they're wanting to now section this off right here and then this will be one.
Okay. No questions for the lady? Alright, thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? You're not Mr. LaJia, are you?
No, sir, but I'm here on behalf of Mr. LaJia.
Okay, good, thank you. Would you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Seth Mize, address is eight-six-five-one Cajun Way in Orange.
Alright, so you have any additional information you'd like to pass on to us?
No, sir, basically what she said, since they didn't separate the land before the development, they just wanted to separate it at this point so he can use that other property for something else.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant, now we're gonna open the floor for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. Again, we did hear from the staff and also the applicant and there are no public comments, so I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the two conditions.
There is a motion to approve with two conditions, is there a second?
Check it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Alright ma'am, PZ two zero two-three dash three-four.
Access surveyors requests approval of a replat of lot one, block twenty-four and lot four, block thirty-four Calder Place addition into lot one A, block twenty-four and lot four A, block thirty-four Calder Place addition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The purpose of this plat is to move the common lot line to the west giving twelve-fifteen Nineteenth Street additional property. A pool deck and brick shed appears to encroach the ten-foot utility easement located along the west property line of twelve-fifteen Nineteenth Street. An accessory structure and driveway appeared at twelve-hundred Oak Crest Circle sometime between twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-two without the benefit of an approved building permit. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, license to encroach shall be required for all structures and/or improvements within the utility easement. The city sewer main and manhole must be exposed and able to be accessed by city staff or removal of the existing structures from the easement may be satisfactory. Number two, no new structures or appurtenances shall be placed within the easement property. The city will not be responsible for any surface restoration when water and/or sanitary sewer repairs are necessary within the city of Beaumont water line and sanitary sewer line easement. Number three, all applicable building permits shall be attained prior to the final recordation of the plat. We sent notices to nineteen property owners and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. However, I do think that there are some neighbors that are present, including the property owners. This is the zoning map. This is the replat. So this was once the original lot line, they're wanting to move it this way to give twelve-fifteen Nineteenth additional property. And then this is the structure that appeared without building permits. There is a power line, or power lines that run through that easement, including a utility easement through here. This is the original applicant, so what was, what was sent in for a pool and deck, this was the original site plan that was given. So you can see the utility easement runs right here, brick shed is already there. And then this is what was sent to us from us Access surveyors. You can see that the new pool is still under construction, but I believe a portion of this deck is encroaching into the utility easement at this time. Again, we do have the property owner and some neighbors in the audience.
Any questions for them? Thank you, ma'am. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon.
Good evening. My name is Colby Bracken, I'm with Access surveyors located at one-one-zero-two-five Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Alright, can, so who hired you, the, the property owner?
The property owner has hired us, Mr. Chavez, and I believe he is here in the audience.
Okay. And he found out that he was encroaching in, on the, on the property, right?
Correct, yes, sir, based off of our survey. The pool and the shed or building is within the easement. I do believe, item number one, I believe the license to encroach is either in the process of being done or it has been done, I'm not sure exactly if it has or not.
So the, the deck of the pool is considered a permanent structure, right? Or it's, it's under the utility line?
It, it is past the utility line within there, I'm not sure of the definition of the permanent structure.
Yeah, normally drives are not, they don't really care about the drives, do they?
Not necessarily, but when it comes to a pool, you know, depends on if it's above ground or whatnot, so.
Any other information you'd like to give us?
I do not have any additional information. The staffing report was pretty well, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We now open the floor for public comments, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Please, James Charles, I live at twelve-fifteen Nineteenth Street.
Yes, sir, Mr. Charles, okay, we have your address and your name, go ahead.
If the, on the drawing that showed the original plat that was done, the shed, albeit inside the easement, is skewed. Skewed in the sense that it is not parallel or perpendicular, if you would.
Yeah.
Parallel with the sign. So when we drew up the pool and had the pool installed, we told them that the, it was the decking would go up against the shed. Well, the shed's crooked, alright? We didn't, we didn't know that at the time from the aerial view, but I mean, anyway, and that's the reason it is like a half a foot over the line into the easement and that's just the way it ended up being, so.
Go ahead. That's how this whole thing started, right?
Been like that for years. We've had the power pole been replaced, I forget which hurricane, and also have had the city go back to the manholes, you can see the manhole on the draw, on the drawing there. They've been back there to the manhole unplugging that sewer. I've been there since oh-four. I know they've been back there half a dozen times. They have clear access to it, there's nothing wrong from the city, the water line, the gas line, it's all clear.
Perfect, okay, well, these things happen. Thank you, sir, any questions for the gentleman? Nope, okay.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, we heard from the staff, the applicant, and also the owner of the property. And we have a case with three conditions in front of us, so I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
We have a motion to approve with the three conditions, is there a second?
Second.
We do have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Well, this happily concludes our regular meeting. We're gonna start our joint meeting with the city council and we have the honorable mayor that's gonna start us with, with the second half of the meeting. Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chairman, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor Robin Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Duriel.
Present.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Neal is absent. Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming this afternoon, this is a joint meeting between forms of the city council and the planning commission. The only opportunity you will have will be on today to make any comments for any of the items. The planning commission will make recommendations to the council within one to two weeks of hearing these items. There will not be a public hearing on any of the other items at the city council meeting and the only time you will be able to speak is today. So thank you for coming and Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we're gonna get started with PZ two zero two-two five oh seven.
Ronnie Wallace requests a specific use permit to establish a church at five-seven-five-zero South Martin Luther King Parkway. This location was once used as a bar and Mr. Wallace intends to begin a ministry here. The building will be used for religious practices such as prayer services and outreach programs. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, appropriate sign and pavement markings shall be installed to update the ADA parking space to current standards. Number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. We sent fourteen property owner notices, we received two in favor and zero in opposition. In favor stating that I am in favor, I would rather a church instead of the clubs around. This is the zoning map. You can see that it's close to the city limits. This is the aerial photography. This is the site plan that was submitted. The subject property, this was also once Bar twenty-three. This is property to the north and northeast. Southeast. Southwest. To the west.
Go back to that drawing of the building, you said something about, did you say ADA parking?
Yes.
That doesn't look like ADA, though.
Yes, I think that for engineering, when they go out for their civil inspection, once they apply for this certificate of occupancy, they'll be checking to make sure the correct signage, you know, parking width, those kinds of things are there. If it's not, then the inspection would fail and they would have to come into compliance before they receive their final CO.
Yeah, so city already determined they need ADA, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the lady?
I don't think there is enough space to fit eighty-eight parkings in that lot.
The lot is much larger than that drawing, I believe, yeah. It's, everything in the back belongs to that.
To kinda go back to the aerial photography, it's not, it's not exactly striped, so those stripings can adjust, he will be in contact with our traffic engineer, though, to make sure that those markings are marked properly.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, any other questions? Okay, and the applicant, Mr. Wallace? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It should be Reverend Wallace, right? Well, good afternoon to you, sir. See, the uniform helps a lot. You doing okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, tell us about your project, please. First of all, give us your name and address for the record and then we go with the project.
Okay, Pastor Ronnie Wallace, I'm at one-three-zero Big Horn Road out of Huntsville, Texas. I'm the owner, used to be a Bar twenty-three and made a transition to a better lifestyle. So me and my wife were looking for a building and I said, wait a minute, we have a building already paid for, let's just, it'll be cheaper to do that versus trying to find a building.
Great, great, and you, you do understand the two conditions and also other stuff that goes along with the building and the parking and the ADA and all that good stuff, right?
Yes, sir, the only thing that I didn't understand was the plumbing, I mean, I'm not touching any of the plumbing, it's already existing.
Yeah, all of that's gonna be taken care of when you go apply for a permit.
Okay.
Alright?
Yes.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening. We've heard from the staff and the applicant and he does understand the conditions noted by the city, so I do look for a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. No, I was gonna see if you're gonna catch it or not. Now that I got caught, let's go back. You know, I saw the Reverend and he bought a bar and making it into a church, it's just kind of... I wanna get it done.
Yeah, I don't wanna block your blessed.
Alright, well. Well, forgive my mistake here. We are gonna go back, if, if you don't mind, hold on to your motion and, and second, but I'd like to understand if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, ma'am, please. Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Angel, I live at eighty-two-fifteen Shenandoah here in Beaumont. The property that is next to the property that we're speaking of, it's been in my family for over seventy years and it has really changed over these many years. At one point, the building was a grocery store where my mother worked, then it went on to other things. Well, there's been shootings over there when the bar was there, people would, and as, when they would have it open, the cars would be parked along my street on Spinaltop. So it made anyone trying to get in to the driveways kinda difficult. So I welcome anything to better the neighborhood because it has changed over seventy years that I have even lived there. So I am in favor of it because I'd rather have a church there than a bar and no offense toward anybody who owns bars, 'cause I went to bars when I was young. So I, I would be in favor of it because it would be possibly a plus for the neighborhood.
Well, I'm sorry that we let the cat out of the bag with approval, but thank you very much.
That's okay, I still want my two cents put in.
You've been very kind for coming up and speaking.
I still wanna put my two cents in.
Thank you, ma'am, I really appreciate it. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We now properly close the public hearing and if you don't mind, I'd like to repeat the motion so we stay legal.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve with the two conditions. And the second was with Mr. Beatty, thank you, Mr. Beatty. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am. PZ two zero two-three dash two-one.
Larissa Payton requests a specific use permit to allow a contractor office with fabrication and outside storage at five-four-five Center. The intent of the business is to fabricate tiny homes and container homes on a trail, trailer for easy delivery to clients. They will have two to three homes on display on the southeast corner of the property. This building does not have running water, as such, they propose to have a portable bathroom on-site for customers and employees. Operational hours will be from eight AM to five PM. They intend to emit noise no greater than one hundred decibels due to the use of a table saw. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, all business operations shall be in compliance with section twenty-eight-point-zero-four-point-zero-zero-seven performance standards. Number three, all building code requirements shall be adhered to due to the change in occupancy, including water and sanitary services. Number four, shall be in compliance with all applicable fire codes. We sent notices to twenty property owners and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. This is the zoning map. It fronts Calder and is off-center. This is the aerial photography, so this, as it is one whole property, this area in blue is really the area that they will occupy, so I wanted to point that out. This is the site plan, again, this area, this, the building that they'll be making the tiny homes in and container homes, and then they'll have these on display out here. These are proposed parking spaces. This is the subject property. This is to the north. Property's to the east. South. And west. I do believe we have the applicants present.
Is this a permanent business or a rental?
I believe that they are leasing from the property owner.
So is that how they're getting away with temporary water?
So that is one of the conditions, is that they'll have to provide water and sanitary services.
Permanent?
Yes, prior to opening.
Alright, good. Perfect, thank you, any questions for the lady?
Yeah, I have a question, who's gonna monitor the decibel level?
So that typically comes in by complaint, I believe that it is the police department that enforces it ultimately. So that typically comes in by complaint, I believe that it is the police department that enforces it ultimately. But I wanna say that the admittance, the maximum in that area is eighty-five decibels, that would be the maximum. So, and that's measured by when you go to the edge of the property from the structure. So it, there is a formula to it, but it would be monitored if we received complaints and such like that.
Questions also, so all the construction is gonna be inside the building?
Yes. And they do have to, they do have to adhere to all the applicable fire codes and building codes, as it is a change in occupancy.
Well, with that question, the water is portable or it's gonna be brought in, how would that meet the fire code?
So I do know from their, and I believe I have my experts here, so we can bring them up. But the, they will be required to install a sprinkler system, with the sprinkler system, they are gonna have to have permanent water brought to that property.
Okay.
And if you need any more in-depth details, I can bring up the, I believe we have the deputy building official here.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, any other questions? Is the applicant in the audience? Hello, you just didn't wanna volunteer, did you?
I don't mind.
Good afternoon to you.
Hello, everyone.
If you please state your name and address for the record.
I am Larissa Payton, my address is five two nine zero Gail Drive, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 oh eight.
Great, Mrs. Payton, would you have any other information that you'd like to pass on to us?
Sure, we build these tiny homes, or we would like to get permission to build these tiny homes on trailers that are being brought in. We don't do metalwork or anything, anything that we do is fabricated outside of the shop, the only thing that we're doing in the shop is woodwork. There is a water tap, I know this is outside of my jurisdiction, but there's a water tap right next to the building, so we've already checked to see how much it would cost to get the water tap, sewer, everything is readily available. So it's gonna be pretty simple to get permanent water, permanent sewer and everything to that building.
Great. And you do understand the noise issue and really, that's, that's all. There are four conditions that are stated in here, have you reviewed those?
I have.
And you, you're confident that you can comply with them, right?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for the lady? Did any of you ask what the tiny home is?
That's enough commercials on TV.
That's exactly what it is. Exactly what it is.
They're cheap.
Right.
So for a home to be considered tiny, it has to be under four hundred square feet.
Okay.
So we, we don't build anything that size.
Perfect. And what, what are, who are your customers normally?
Customers are advertisers primarily online, the, and word of mouth. When people are hearing that we have tiny homes that are being built in the city, there's been quite an uproar about it, so it's primarily word of mouth, we have some advertising, I'm sure we'll do local advertising as well. But right now, online is our primary source.
Have you been doing this for a while?
Not the tiny homes, we've been doing regular homes and remodeling. We've been dealing with the city for quite a while.
Great, great, well, I wish you a lot of success.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
We're gonna open the floor for public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon to you, sir.
Good afternoon, my name's Mark Stratton, and I live at forty-two oh one Willa Oak Drive in Groves, Texas. I am the owner of the property. And I think it would be great to have someone come in there. I don't know if anyone's ridden around that area lately, but that's not the nicest place to be. We just put up a fence in the back to keep some of the homeless from using the back part of my property as a outhouse, basically, and no telling what else has been done back there, so I just had a fence put up back there to try to curtail this, to keep people from going back there. They were coming in the back part of the property and they were using her, Johnny on the spot, and other things that they were doing back there, so I'm hoping I've got that part of it stopped. They've been breaking into my building for years, and it's nice to see that somebody is gonna come in and do something nice down there. We just had someone break into our building about a month ago and my son had him at gunpoint until the police got there and we were able to get that stopped, but if you ride by twelve ninety Calder, it used to be my grandfather's glass company, San Jacinto Glass. And it looks like a war zone on that storefront up front with all the plywood and stuff from getting broke into. When the city of Beaumont put in the paved, nice cobblestone sidewalks and all that, they were digging it up and they were throwing it through my windows. So as an owner, and I do have other buildings to rent there, I'm sort of seeing how Larissa's gonna pave the way for me to basically, hopefully, rent some of my other buildings out in the future. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you, please.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Well, good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon, my name is Stephanie Shepherd and I came all the way in from Houston last minute. I too second the mark, I, I visited the property a few weeks ago.
Forgive me for interrupting if you would.
Stephanie Shepherd?
Yeah.
I'm at one four nine one nine Opera House Row in Cypress, Texas, seven seven four two nine. And I was coming to talk about this property in particular that they are building inside. It is, you know, driving into the area and seeing the homeless coming around and I think there's more than homeless walking around, but it's, it is not really a safety, a safe place for that area, but knowing that they are going to use that space and make good of it, as well as the noise, I don't think the noise is gonna be a concern with everything else that's going around outside that property. We did postpone a ribbon cutting that we had scheduled in March, later on this, I believe it was on the seventeenth, so we're hoping that we can get this approved and get things going. If you're interested in knowing more about the tiny homes, we are going to be at the Beaumont Home and Garden Show at Ford Park. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, we've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and they do understand the conditions stated by the staff and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions.
We have a motion to approve with the four conditions, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion in the matter? None is heard, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good luck to you folks. Have a great day. All right, we're gonna go to PZ two zero two three two six.
Caliber Collision requests a specific use permit to allow a paint and body shop at six two five five Concord. They have facilities nationwide and will have operating hours from Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to five thirty PM. This business will be automotive repair, will be an automotive repair shop with operations such as glass and auto, body repairs, painting, et cetera. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions, number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water sewer, water and sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, a net zero increase in the runoff will be required to ensure the runoff from the proposed conditions match the existing conditions for the one hundred year storm event using Atlas fourteen rainfall data per drainage District Six. Number three, construction plan shall be in compliance with section twenty-eight point zero four point zero zero six landscaping and screening requirements. And number four, install a five-foot sidewalk along Concord Road and Judy Lane. We sent notices to eleven property owners and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. This is the zoning map. This is aerial photography, it's undeveloped land, they are going to divide this, so they'll be on this side of budding Judy Lane and Concord. This is the site plan. Here's a zoom in. This is the subject property and east. Property to the north. To the west. To the south. And I do believe we have the applicants present.
Any questions for them? Thank you, ma'am, is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, folks.
Good afternoon.
If you would introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Carrie Smith, forty-three thirty-two Marsh Ridge Road in Carlton. And I'm with the developer.
And I'm Chris Hogan, I'm with the engineering firm, we are located at thirty-three oh seven West Davis Street in Conroe.
Fantastic, thank you. Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us?
No, Caliber's really excited to be in Beaumont, they just opened their sixteen hundred location nationwide, so very trusted auto provider. We're gonna have a fully screened yard, all of our work is done inside in an insulated building with the doors shut, so there's very little noise. Like she mentioned, our operating hours are from seven thirty to five thirty. We're closed on the weekends. So yeah, we're great, great partners and really excited to be in Beaumont.
Fantastic. Any questions for the folks? You own sixteen hundred of them, you ought to know what you're doing, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Got it down.
Fantastic, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now open the floor for public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir. How are you this afternoon?
Very good.
Fantastic, if you would give us your name and address for the record and then we'll be happy to listen to you.
My name is Scott Walker, address is forty-four sixty Thomas Glenn. I am the property owner that's selling them a portion of a large tract of land. And I think I am in favor of the request for the, or the special use permit. The, when I was presented an option to sell it to them, I looked at the, looked at their website and saw exactly what the construction of these paint and body shop facilities were, and they were very impressive. So I was very, say yes, that would be something I'd love to have on that property, I have some adjoining property, and I think it would be a benefit to the city and something very much to be proud of, so I'm in favor.
Good, thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We're gonna close the public hearing, we heard from the staff, we heard from the, the owners and also the gentleman that is in favor of the case, so we have four conditions and I look forward to a motion.
Motion to approve with the four conditions.
We have a motion to approve with the conditions, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion from anybody? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Ms. Engman?
Shantae Tate requests a specific use permit to allow a duplex at seventeen twenty-five Threadneedle, which is zoned as residential single family. The structure will be one story with two units for a combined total of two thousand square feet. According to our city's comprehensive plan, the property is located within a conservation and revitalization area. Such areas are built up areas where a significant portion of the area is experiencing influences such as incompatible land uses, dilapidated structures, vacant parcels which may exist are good to excellent development sites. Staff recommends approval with the following condition, number one, install a four-foot sidewalk to connect to the existing sidewalk system. Number two, the lot shall be graded to drain towards the street and not onto adjacent properties. We sent notices to twenty-nine property owners, so far we have received zero in favor and two in opposition. One stating land for duplex is too small, that, that area is a residential area. This is the zoning map, outlined in red is the subject property. Aerial photography, there is a alleyway or drainage ditch that runs right here. This is the site plan. This is the subject property. Properties to the north. To the east. South. And west. I believe we have the applicant present, and we have a couple neighbors.
Any questions?
Yeah, how, you send out twenty-nine notices.
Yes.
How many in favor and how many in opposition?
Two in favor, zero in op, I'm so sorry, zero in favor, two in opposition. And then again, that one, one of the oppositions was simply circled no, the other one stated that the land is too small for a duplex and that area is a residential area.
Question, is this one story or two story?
One story, with two units.
With two units.
Can you, can you put the picture back up of the actual property?
Yes. This one, subject property.
I have another question. You said it's a one story, and I'm looking at, the width of this is forty feet?
Yes, sir.
And how are you gonna get to the second unit in the back?
So I believe that they park here and then this sidewalk connects them to door one and door two. So I believe it's split right here.
Any other question? Thank you, ma'am, yes, sir. I guess we're gonna open up for the public hearing now, go ahead.
My name is Gerald John, my address is twenty-six fifty Ashley Avenue.
Yes, sir, good afternoon to you.
Yes, on, on this property we're talking about, first of all, the property is too small, you have two alleys intervening. Second problem you have is the street, it's not, you cannot have double parking on the, on thread in that block. And second and third thing is it's residential area.
All right, sir, thank you. Anybody else that would like?
Yes.
Sure. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Shantae Tate and I reside at twelve two fifty Elmo Orchard Trail, Humble, Texas. The reason why I'm bringing a duplex to Beaumont is to give more opportunities for people to live. Now, it is a small space and that's why it's up and down instead of across. You can put two units on there, the building is about two thousand square feet, so each unit will be about a thousand square feet with three bedrooms, two bath, a kitchen and a living quarters. And so there are a lot of displaced people in Beaumont, so what I'm trying to do is maximize on the land. I did not know if that is true, what the gentleman said about double parking, but if approved, I will look into that.
Any questions for the lady?
You from Beaumont and you own, you're the owner of the property?
Yes, sir, but I live in Humble currently.
Okay.
I have a question for you, are you familiar with that area?
Yes, sir.
You grew up in that area or something?
No, sir, but I am familiar with the area.
Okay, I know that it's what the gentleman was saying before, it's a very tight area and for what your construction on a forty-foot lot and a duplex. Was that the best suit that you had for that land?
Well, the width is about twenty-nine and the length is eighty, somewhere around up in there. So I tried to get it constructed within the grounds of your Beaumont's permitting. So I had to look at that and I worked with my architect on that as well.
Would, I know you're trying to do a duplex for rental, and according to what most duplexes would go, are being built in Beaumont in the surrounding area, how did you compare that to put that on that small of a land?
There's one on Harriet, same concept.
On a forty-foot lot?
Um, yes, cuz it's tiny. It's, it's long ways and the lot is still tiny. But what happens is, there's a lot right next to it that's vacant. So, um, with this one, there are two houses, so that the perception may be different.
Okay. And, but you're saying two thousand square feet?
Yes sir.
So it's a thousand feet per unit?
Per unit.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You said there're gonna be three bedroom, two bath?
Yes sir.
Three bedroom, two bath and a thousand square feet? Alright, uh, hang on a second if you don't mind. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against? No, no, hang on here. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for? Okay, if you don't mind, have a seat because I wanted you to respond to the other gentleman, but I'll get you back in a minute.
Okay.
Yes sir, good afternoon to you. How are you this afternoon?
Alright.
If you please state your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear from you.
Melvin Duhan, seventeen fifteen Threadneedle.
Mister Duhan, tell us.
Well, it's, it's not uh, big enough to put uh, a duplex and then there's nowhere to park. We have ditches, no si- uh, roadside where you can park two cars on the street. So where are they gonna park the cars?
Alright, and you live in the neighborhood, right?
I live right next door to it.
Perfect, okay. Any other comments sir?
Nah, I just can't see it cuz then it's gonna be a lot of traffic and that's what I'm talking about.
Alright sir, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good afternoon. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Perfect, uh, no other comments, so uh, uh, Mrs. Tate? Uh, you had a couple of negative comments. Do you wanna uh, reply back or are you good with that? You have a chance to reply.
One thing I will note is I'm glad that the community is giving their input. But um, can I have a meeting with y'all off record? Okay. I'm gonna have a meeting with them off record because they were established there. That is their community. I'm not interchanging the dynamics of your community and I will honor your wishes.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Great. We've heard from the staff, we've heard from the applicant and also a couple of people that oppose the project. And with that, I would uh, open up the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
We have a motion to approve with two conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, show your hands. You made the motion, you can raise your hand. Anybody else? The motion fails. Alright, so do we need another motion I guess?
Yes, you guys have the recommendation successful, you have to have a motion.
Is there another motion that can be brought to the commission?
I, I have a question, uh, to the gentleman that disagreeing with what's going to be housed there. What is it that you would like to see on that vacant property that would assist housing individuals in our community? Wha- what would you wanna see there?
Uh, I don't mind doing that if it's gonna resolve the issue. They've already said it's too small, so I'm not sure what else they're gonna tell us.
Too small for that particular project?
For parking.
For anything? I'm just trying to, I, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it because obviously there may be something that they would like to see.
The gentleman's volunteering. Would you come back up please? Thank you sir. Sorry for making you going back and forth. This is good for your neighborhood.
Yes. Oh, what we have to understand is this.
Would you state your name one more time?
My name is Gerald Duhan. My address is twenty-six fifty Ashley Avenue.
Thank you.
What I'm concerned about is this. I mean, first of all, the property is too narrow. Second, you have alleys passing by. I mean, the alleys between the two ho- I mean, the house and the property. Second thing you have to understand is this, that the street is too uh, too nar- narrow for parking. In case of emergency, only one car can be on the street for an emergency vehicle to get in. Third thing you have to understand is where they're gonna park at the residence.
There.
I mean, far as uh, far as uh, a home being there, I mean, outside of a home with a duplex, no. I mean, a home would have to be small according to the land and city ordinance and everything.
What was there prior to?
Before it was torn down and vacant lot, there was a home there. That home was built, if I'm not mistaken, in the fifties.
Would you be amenable to a home being a single-family residential home there?
Oh definitely. If, if the uh, there won't be no problem on the parking and everything.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you sir. So now, we need to ask for more opinions or are we good? I'll work on this thing all the time and you call it a spill, god. Where is Rodney Denjofiel? Alright, uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Counselor?
I have a question. I'd like to ask staff to let us know, in the event this were to fail uh, and the applicant, would they be able to come back with another uh, proposal with, without a fee? Or would there be another fee if they came back?
So if they ruled on it, um, one way or the other and then it comes to you guys, um, I believe that they would have to reapply under a new fee. However, if it's tabled, um, then there would be no fee for that.
So it could be tabled, is that correct?
Yes, so the recommendation is not to change it to have the application.
So, so any commissioner could ask that it be tabled to allow, I think, uh, one state she wanted to.
I'd, I'd see exactly where you're going commissioner. I, I think the lady was uh, honorable to, to offer to visit with the, with the uh, neighbors. And uh, we could table the, the case, let her visit with the, with the uh, neighbors. If, if they are satisfied with this, like she said, they lived there all their lives, uh, it's their neighborhood and if they're satisfied with the, with the new uh, project, they can come back without a fee if it's tabled. Yes sir, go ahead.
Uh, they keep asking about parking, but earlier did you say on the picture where those cars or is that like a parking lot on the property?
Yes, so this is a pull-in um, lot right, well, lot, um, where they would back on, back up onto Threadneedle. Um, typically, it's one and a half parking spaces per unit, um, so they actually have more. Um, it should be, you know, minimum is three.
They wouldn't be parking on the street, they would be parking on the property?
Technically, now it is a three-bedroom, you know, there's circumstances, right? Like it's a three-bedroom, two-bath, so with three bedrooms, you know, could be.
Each one requires two, doesn't it?
Well, each unit itself, just like apartment complexes, would be uh, one and a half spaces per unit. So since there's two, the minimum's three, but could be four. Now, it is three bedrooms, so if you have, you know, two people that are driving within um, each unit, then that would be satisfactory. But if they have people that come over or anything like that, it could, it could force uh, parking onto the uh, road. So, there is parking available that is on their private property. Um, whether it's enough, that, that's up to circumstance.
I have a question.
One of the gentlemen was saying that if you have cars parked, then one of those cars would not have a line of sight and has to back into possibly an incoming pro- uh, car. Go ahead sir.
Uh, clarification, uh, Councilman Dureo, and I'm trying to find out where you were going with that, that question. Uh, because I think one of the gentlemen said that there is not curb and gutter, that, that's a ditch there. And is that parking? Is the car parking gonna be completely on the property or is it gonna be over the ditch? Uh, cuz the drawing looks like it's gonna be bumped out to the road. Because when you say a thousand, two, a two thousand square foot property, it's gonna be deep. And I was just trying to find out what was the, uh, where was that parking re- actually starting?
The way this is drawn, the ditch has to be covered with pipes and the lady can, can explain that.
So the ditch has to be covered with pipes and I have to continue the sidewalk there. The property is a hundred and forty depth, but it's only eighty feet long. So I can go back as far as need be with, because I would still have at least thirty feet to work with if I need to put parking back, situate it back as well. A car is not thirty feet long. And what I can do, because of the issue with the parking, is make it double parking. If you're coming to visit, you need to park behind the person you're coming to visit.
Right. Well, I was also looking at, when you're saying forty foot wide or the, the structure's only twenty-nine.
Right, because I have to have.
Thousand square feet, it's gonna take almost that whole lot.
So I still have that white part back there.
Okay.
Real quick to clarify, every piece that is within these dotted lines right here is within the property line. Now, I will show you what the gentlemen are speaking on. So to the east, there is this alleyway, which is that drainage ditch that they're speaking on and on the backside, there is that alleyway as well.
Thank you ma'am. Okay. Now, we had a motion and it failed for lack of vote and uh, I'll look for another motion.
A motion to table, um, this mo- uh, this recommended, wait, what is this?
Case.
Case, yes. A motion to table this case until the parking issue is resolved and they can come back with a new parking plan.
It would be with the agreement with the neighbors, right?
With, yes, with the agreement with the neighbors.
We have a motion to table the case until an agreement reached with the neighbors by the uh, by the property owner. And uh, the owner's shaking her head and the two gentlemen's, they're not.
One question sir. Oh, will we get a, no, will we, uh, get together, will we get a notice that when they, when the meeting will be held?
Yes sir, you would be notified. Alright, anybody wants to complicate this anymore?
Yes.
Second. I thi- I, I.
We have a motion and a second.
Can I speak?
Uh, yes sir, you, we have a motion and a second, now you can discuss it.
Okay, uh, this can be built and uh, uh, we can uh, 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 pass this thing and there is no reason to fail because she has enough room and they are parking in their parking lot. I build homes, I know it can be done, it's no problem and we have to, new homes, new construction, uh, we have to get going in Beaumont. We should not stop it and uh, and uh, uh, this is not, this is not good, you know, for Beaumont.
Good. Thank you sir. Uh, we have a motion and a second and we had the discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Any in opposition? One opposition. Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna wait until uh, the property owner visits with the uh, with the neighbors and then they're gonna file for another uh, meeting and then the, the, the neighbors would be notified and we're gonna visit again. Thank you very much. Sorry that we kinda took a little long way to get here. Uh, now we're gonna go to PZ two zero two three three seven.
Deborah Tomo requests a zone change to a zero point three acre tract located east of sixty-seven thirty Concord Road. She would like to rezone the property from residential, single family to residential, multifamily, medium density. If granted, the property owner will use the land for a driveway to access a future multifamily development. According to our city's comprehensive plan, the property is located within the Parkdale Regional Center. Regional centers may include hospitals, branch libraries, governmental agencies, major office complexes, regional shopping centers and higher density residential development. This request appears to align with our city's comprehensive plan of Beaumont. Staff recommends approval of the request. We sent notices to eleven property owners and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. On the screen, this is the portion that they wish to uh, rezone that will match this larger portion back here for the multifamily development. This is the aerial photography of the area to be rezoned. And then this is the site plan that they gave, so they also own this. This is not the area that they intend to uh, rezone. It's just gonna be this area in blue. This is the subject property and north, so over here, this is sixty-seven thirty Concord. Over here is the area that they're going to rezone, so this area right here. Properties to the east. To the south. To the west. And I believe that the applicants are present.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Demi? Now, this hurt, so uh, the applicant, good afternoon. Uh, Mrs. Tomo, right?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good afternoon, and that is the great Mister Wall.
Yes.
How are you doing?
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman.
Good afternoon to you sir. Uh, if you please introduce yourself and give us your address.
It's Deborah Tomo, thirty-five fifty Fannin Street, seven 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 zero one, Beaumont, Texas.
And I'm Greg Wall, seventy-nine ninety-nine Gladys, uh, Suite one oh one in Beaumont.
Great. Uh, any additional information you guys would like to give us?
Um, we are building a um, domestic violence and sexual assault shelter. Um, we have been around since nineteen thirty-one and have been um, starting our victim services since nineteen eighty-five. So we've been here for, for a long time. Um, we also have a shelter right now and because we've been flooded several times, that's why we're moving to um, a non-flood zone.
Fantastic. Any questions for the lady? Mister Wall, you have anything to add?
No, then we've uh, we've begun the design. I have done a, a preliminary code analysis of the entire facility and I have already had a meeting with the city departments and the drainage district to discuss the project in more detail and so far, where everything is in line with them.
Perfect, and you know you're very good hands. Great. Any questions for the folks?
How many square feet building is going to be?
Approximately thirty-six thousand square feet currently.
Any other questions? Thank you folks. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
We're gonna open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Don, you don't wanna say anything? Great. So we closed the public hearing and uh, we have heard from the staff and the great job that the owner's gonna be doing. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second, we have uh, Mister Javid that is gonna recuse himself and with that, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Demi, we got one more and if you can let us go home before five, that would be fantastic.
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Aaron Ward requests a specific use permit to expand the church located at sixteen eighty-five Pennsylvania. The site has an existing structure being used as a church and they wish to add an activity building to the south of it. The church holds weekly services on Sunday, Monday and Wednesday. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for any water and sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's ba- backflow, pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, construction plans must meet all fire and building code requirements. We sent notices to twenty-two property owners and received one in favor, zero in opposition. In favor states, activity center for the children. This is the zoning map. This is the aerial photography. This is the area for the proposed activity um, building and this is the existing church. Site plan. Subject property. To the north. To the east. South. And west. To the north, to the east, south, and west. And I believe we have the, uh, applicants present.
Any questions for Demi? Okay, uh, Mr. Ward and, uh, yeah, Mr. Ward. Oh, no. Okay. For the record, this is not Mr. Ward. Go ahead.
My name's Richard Faust, I'm with Faust Engineering and Surveying. Uh, address is fifty-five fifty East Tex- freeway, Suite O, in the wonderful city of Beaumont, Texas.
You know, the mayor's not here, so you didn't have to say that.
Well, I think it's a great town.
Okay.
I moved here from Houston, I wouldn't live anyplace else. We're asking for an S U P for a, um, Activity Center for the Christ Mission Temple. We've met with the city staff, reviewed the requirements, and, um, with, uh, your approval, look forward to building a building for the church.
Fantastic, and you understand the two requirements, the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Faust? Thank you, Mr. Faust, good to see you.
You too.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
I'm alright. My name is Pastor Adrian Hopkins. Um, I'm the pastor of the church. We have a few members here, um, who came down. One of those members is, uh.
Pastor, would, if you'd be kind enough, uh, give us your address one more time.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, the address of the church is sixteen, my personal, thirty-nine sixty Broadmoor Drive, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero seven.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Alright. Um, have a few members from the church here. Most of the members have been there longer than myself. One of the members is a young lady here who is eighty-five years old. Her husband, um, came to this city back in the eighties to establish, not really establish, but pastor the church. And he is pastor, he had passed away. We're at the point where we have outgrew the building that we're in, that's why we purchased the lot. And we're trying to find a place, uh, for our children so we can do things just with our children and children in the community. And we appreciate if you give us the opportunity to do that. This is my wife.
Fantastic, good afternoon to you, ma'am.
Hello, how are you?
Doing very well. If you would just state your name for the record and I'm assuming you have the same address.
Yes.
Perfect.
Tony Hopkins, thirty-nine sixty Broadmoor Drive, here in Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just had a little something, one of the members who couldn't make it just wanted to depart on her part.
You have three minutes, so.
Three minutes, it's not gonna be long, I promise. As an active member of Christ Mission Temple, I am fully in favor to request the build of a youth center in the, for the children. My husband and I witnessed firsthand the need for a safe and positive space where young people can gather and learn. The youth center will not only benefit the children, but also have a, a positive impact on the surrounding community. With the ongoing residential conservation revitalization of the district, the youth center will give the community hope and a ser, uh, serve as a pride in the neighborhood. The center will also provide a space for children to engage in positive activities, stay off the streets, ultimately contributing to the betterment of our community. Therefore, strong, I strongly urge the Beaumont Planning Committee to approve our project. And we do, my husband and I, we do spend a lot of time mentoring to the children. So I witnessed it firsthand because I personally contribute to it as well. But we would like a bigger facility to teach our children to be better and to enjoy their community that they're living in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Great. Is there anybody, uh, well, we have the, the applicant and then we're gonna open it for the public opinion. So if you have any comments, we'd love to hear from you. Good afternoon to you.
Good afternoon. My name is Daphne P., address fifty-three forty Genor Lane, here in Beaumont. I'm, I'm a member of Christ Mission Temple, also active in the ministry. And I have been with this family for a year and a half now. And I'm a mother of five children, so, and they're active as well. And with the community center for them, for the children, it'll give them a place to come. Cause I've born, I was raised in the South End area, Alpha Buford. So I was in the, raised in the projects there, so I knew that area and what it was. And I've seen how it, it's decreased. And with that center there, it'll help pull in. And with the pastor, I've seen him with these children. I've seen his wife with the children. It's a children environment and it's beautiful and his, he has a passion for the children. So, I'm in highly favor of this.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this? Well, good afternoon to you, ma'am.
Hello.
How are you doing today?
Fine, thank you. My name is Shirley Richards. I prefer being called Mrs. Shirley Richards because I'm eighty-five years old. Pastor, I already told you all my age, but it's okay. But, uh, I have been a member of Christ Mission Temple since nineteen eighty-eight. My husband and I moved there, moved from California to his hometown here in Beaumont. Uh, he came there to pastor the church and he passed it from eighty-eight until his home going in nineteen ninety-nine. And this pastor that we have now, he is really young people oriented. Can I tell him some of the things he did? Let me tell you what he and his wife do. Every year for Christmas, he and his wife personally buy bicycles, tricycles, and other things like that for the children of church. When it's time to go back to school, he and his wife go out and buy nice tennis shoes, expensive tennis shoes for all the kids at church. Now, we don't have a whole bunch of children, but it still can add up to quite a bit. But anyway, he and his wife are both very giving people and we thank God for that. This center is something that's been on his heart. He's been our pastor for five years and he's been talking about it for five years. Please grant it. I'm in favor, but God bless you, thank you. I'm sorry, my address is twenty-twenty Bun Street, Beaumont, my zip is seven 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 zero five.
Thank you very much, ma'am, thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome.
Have a great afternoon.
I plan to. But if you all don't approve this, we gonna have to be back again. Cause this is, this is on his heart.
Well, thank you. Uh, I don't know, this wasn't in my script. You know, I, I exercise answers before I come in every day, but. Go ahead, sir. Alright. If you would allow us one second.
Okay.
The, the lady, no, no, yeah, go ahead. That's right, she can't cut the line.
I wanna show you all my autobiography. You can get it on amazon.com. The title of it is "Go to Africa Who Not Me." My husband and I have worked with children all over the world. We've worked with missionaries, some different mission boards, but never have I worked with anyone, as I said, who is as dedicated to looking out for children, helping children, as our pastor and his wife. Want me to leave my book with you so you can, so you can see it?
Fantastic, we'd love to.
Oh, you, you get it on amazon.com.
We will. Just, just so you know, you might not believe this, but I have personally designed more missionary Baptist church than anybody else in this town.
I need to talk to you.
Sure. But that wasn't an advertisement, it was just to tell you.
My husband, I've been to Africa twenty-seven times, I worked missionaries in South America before, I was a British Bible translator. And I'm still involved in missionary work at the age of eighty-five. My children made me give up my passport last year.
Well, you've done your part, thank you. And the gentleman?
Good evening.
Good evening to you, sir. If you would state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Earl Blood. My address is fifty-nine eighty Terrill Park Road, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 oh five. I too am a member of Christ Mission Temple. Just a little short history of Christ Mission Temple. I'm sixty-three. I've been there since I can remember. We started off in my grandmother's.
She said you were a baby.
Yes. We started off in my grandmother's den. That's where it started from and created to there. We had a great pastor before, we have a great pastor now. The youth center and the activity center, we're gonna build. It's gonna help the community, cause like I said, the pastor and his wife, and I am president of Brotherhood, does a great job with the kids and it's always the kids first, cause they are the future. And as being in Brotherhood and a member of Christ Mission Temple, wanna tell the planet community, this is not gonna be the last time you see us up here, cause there's other properties behi, around us. And we are aiming to grab that too, to expand, you know? We are going places. So Christ Mission Temple, we'll hear from them again and we appreciate the time you offered.
Perfect, thank you. It's such a pleasure to hear from nice people. Great, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Great, we're gonna close the public hearing. We heard from the, uh, the staff and applicant and the great stories of the good work they're doing. With that, I would entertain a motion.
So move with two conditions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Good luck to you folks, thank you very much for coming. With that, uh, Councilman Muriro, if you please, let us go home. Thank you, sir.
Good job.
See, I talked all afternoon, nobody said anything. He just says you're a journey, you did a good job.
I mean, nothing, he's the one in trouble.
Good, dude?
Which it did, Mr. Tomo, we're gonna quiet. Hey, buddy. I am doing great, hey, uh, when is, uh, our services work?